All right, it's two o'clock. I think we have everyone present, so I'd like to call this work session for the City Council of Manzanita to order. So, order, everyone. We've got a few things on the agenda for today. Jerry's going to take us through the process for changing vehicle use on the ocean shore. This is a response that's come up after a recent conversation or correspondence with citizens. So Jerry's gonna, I think, take us through the process for change. And Jerry, maybe a little bit on the background. We did talk about this in council meeting. Wait, no, we talked about this in reference to this. So if you can give some background, that'd be great. Then we have Dan Blue here from Recology, who's going to be talking to us. And I think this will be informational primarily. No decisions today, of course, regarding the Recycling Modernization Act. And then I'm going to have Linda speak to the last item, the short-term rental discussion. We'd planned today is now deferred, and Linda will address that. Why don't we just do that first, Linda, and then we'll get on to the content of the meeting? And welcome to everyone else who is attending, by the way. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we had planned to do a short-term rental report today. And by the time we had everybody signed off, so that we were ready to go, it was too late to give the council enough time to review it. So this process has been, it's a long-term process. There's, you know, there was no urgency in doing it today. So I expect we'll probably do it in January, just ballpark. But I will certainly, or we will all let you know when, when we have the lengthy conversation about the next steps, policy next steps on short-term rental. But for today, we're delaying.
Okay, thank you. Always appreciate the time to prepare well. So I think good call. Thanks to you and the committee and to City Manager for that. Thank you. So I will say, I neglected to at the beginning, for those of you who are joining us, who may not be accustomed to these work sessions, these are sessions designed for council to be able to go into greater depth on sometimes just one, but in the case of today, a few topics. And it's not a, it's not set up for public comment. We are really here to work with each other, learn and have discussions on topics that require deeper work and more work than we can accomplish in our regular council meetings. So that's the purpose of today. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Councillor Spengman. Please go ahead, Jerry.
Thanks, Catherine. So as you know, City Manager and Council received a letter from Sandy Wood, and I think it's the most recent of a couple of letters that Sandy has submitted, as well as other residents with concerns about vehicles on the beach. And vehicle usage on the beaches governed by administrative rules of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. The city doesn't have the authority to change those rules, but we do have the opportunity to petition Oregon Parks and Rec to consider rulemaking changes. There's actually two paths to that. One is to have, I think, 20 impacted residents petition the Parks Department. And the other is for the governing body of the affected jurisdiction to petition. And so we're going to at least consider pursuing the latter. This is not a decision point today. This is just an opportunity to let council know and let the public know what we're doing, what we're thinking about doing, and what the timeline for that will be. So I've had some discussions. Brad put me into a conversation that was already well underway with Ben Cox at the Halen Bay State Park. And from there, I've been talking with the government relations person for the Parks Department. And essentially, their process is, once we trigger the process by submitting a request for a rulemaking hearing, they put it on their docket at the next available meeting, and it turns out that that won't be until February. So the February 25th meeting, which is a virtual meeting, is the first time we could be heard on a petition to seek a rule change. And that slows us down a little bit. We certainly can get this thing in the pipeline as early as our December meeting, but I talked with government relations folks today, and they don't see an urgency. They think that if we want to take until the January meeting, we can do that. So I'm gonna, I've been working on putting together the petition. And I could certainly have it ready to be in our packet for our December meeting, but it may well be that be more prudent to slow it down, get it as complete as possible, and have it ready for the January meeting. Essentially, there's 16 separate criteria that the Parks Department is going to consider. They fall into five categories, and most of the complaints that we have heard really address one category, safety. So I want to make sure, I'm sure we'll have enough to say on safety, both from a perspective of the council and more importantly, from citizens. But I want to make sure we have stuff to say on the other four categories of criteria. And I've started thinking through them. Those four categories are access concerns, specifically access for physically limited individuals, scenic and recreation values, natural resources, and beach management. Without going into detail of what those criteria look like, I'll just say that it's honestly not very complicated. And I think it's pretty straightforward. The one area where I would ask people to help me out, if you have any thoughts along the way between now and when we draft the petition, is under natural resources. And I'll circulate that language from the rule. Essentially, that's where they're looking for any impacts on wildlife or vegetation. And, you know, I can certainly speak to that, but not without, not with any authority or expertise. So that's one area that I think we can shore up. I think we'll be fine on safety, access concerns, scenic recreation values, and beach management. So my, when I met with Leila yesterday, my proposal was to craft the the request essentially, and have it in the packet for our next meeting. And then today, subsequently, I talked to government relations, and it doesn't seem like it's particularly worth rushing to get it into our December meeting when when our January meeting is going to be a full seven weeks before they're going to decide anyway. So suffice it to say that it's a straightforward process. There's plenty for us to say. We should not anticipate that there won't be opposition. There will be a public hearing, probably very akin to the public hearing we had with the Dune grading a couple of years back. There also will be a public comment time. So I'm assuming that if they agree to open up rulemaking on this at their February meeting, they'll probably set it for a hearing in April. And between February and April, there'll be a period of time where people can file public written comments, and then there will be a public hearing where the public will be invited to weigh in. So I have, I would say either at the December meeting or the January meeting, in order for, in order for the governing body to submit the request for a rule change, we do have to take a formal vote. So we will, we will have a resolution for the council to consider at either December or January. And then actually, even after the process is complete, if the Parks Department proposes a rule change, we then have to formally vote on it on the back end. So we're not committed to any particular outcome here. What we're, I think what we're attempting to do is open up the process to give the public an opportunity to to persuade the Parks Department to alter the rule. And the current rule, just to restate it, most people probably know this, but the current rule is that vehicle access in general is limited to October through the end of April, from 7:00 AM till 12:00 noon. And that stretches essentially from the Akani Mountain down to the State Park.
So Jerry, a couple of questions. The resolution that you talked about that we would potentially address in December would just be to get consensus from the council that we want this process to move forward.
Exactly. Yeah. So let me just address that really quickly, because I think what we, what we probably need to do is there's probably going to be essentially two documents. One is the the document that actually lays out the arguments using the criteria in the rule. These are the reasons why we think there should be a change in the rule. And then a separate document is a resolution of the council asking the State Parks Department to open up a rulemaking on this. And the resolution will just incorporate the petition essentially.
And then if they move forward and decide to open up the rule change, and let's say the Parks Department says, yes, we're going to move forward with restricting vehicle access, we would then have another either resolution or ordinance to support saying this is now in place?
Yeah, I don't think it would be an ordinance. I think it would be, I mean, it appears in the rules that they just want the governing body to confirm or accede to the rule change. So I think there will be a formal vote, both to open up the process, or at least to seek having the process opened up, and also to formally put a period on the process. But I don't, it shouldn't, I wouldn't think it would be an ordinance, because it, you know, it's not our land to rule, essentially.
And then just to to confirm, this would be a rule change only applying to personal vehicles. This would not impact any rescue rangers, any of those other required, what I would call required services or departments?
Right.
Jerry, sorry. Who is speaking?
I'm done. I just said thank you.
Okay. Do we have any sense, or were you able to get any sense in your conversations with Parks and Rec if if other cities have done this, and/or what the success rate is of communities asking for this exemption?
Well, Leila had actually found some information regarding changes, I think, down in Lincoln City and/or Newport. So it is, it is a moving target. I mean, the coastline has different features from, you know, Story to Brookings. And so there's a lot of different issues that might call for different rules in different places. And my sense is that it's not it's not unusual for these requests to be made, but it is also usual for there to be two vigorous arguments on both sides of it. So, you know, I don't, honestly, I don't anticipate a huge outcry but of opposition, but it'd be naive to think there's no one out there that'll speak up. And so that's why you have a public hearing. So I suspect we'll hear from both sides. But that's why I think it's important for us to, you know, not just rush in and lay it all on the safety card, because that's just one of five categories of criteria. And I think we need to address as many of them as are relevant. So Leila, I'm not sure if you have any more information on what happened in Newport or Lincoln City?
Oh, it's just that they just had recently done it. I think it was last year, which I reached out to Ben about, and kind of that's how I got all the information I was able to share with council. So they had just passed those driving bans. And I know they have them in Cannon Beach, Cape Coanda, Pacific City, and the Oregon Dunes National Recreational Area. So there's a number of places.
Is that just in front of Manzanita? Is that kind of, what are the boundaries of that?
The one that we, the rule that we are specifically seeking to change essentially runs from the south border of Oswald West to the north border of the Halen Bay State Park.
Okay.
So you know, some of that turf doesn't directly concern us, but for the most part, it's our beach, yes.
And then does it, it just restricts cars? Does it, I mean, kind of, is it motor vehicles only? Is that what it, what you're focused on?
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess we start with the wording of the existing restriction. And the existing restriction essentially is aimed at, you know, personal vehicles for recreational pleasure use. It's not attempting to restrict emergency response vehicles of any kind. And there's also, you know, there's also a language that clearly permits vehicles involved in boat launching, which I, you know, I'll admit, I'm not familiar with a lot of boat launching happening out on the ocean. I mean, I know it goes on in the bay. So I don't, there's some things I'm going to have to learn about in the next couple of weeks. And that's why I actually am happy to have a little extra time, because I was talking to Leila, and I think we can get information, valuable information from several staff that have different pieces of this, given the different criteria that are involved. I think we can build a pretty good case if we, if we do it carefully. And so I think I may opt for pulling this together by the January meeting instead of December meeting.
And it refers to, sorry.
Leila, go ahead.
It refers to motor vehicles is the term that's used.
So the wheelchair, the electronic wheelchair wouldn't be part of that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so that was kind of, I had questions along that line also. Because when you start talking about motor vehicles, now you've got Teslas that are electronic vehicles, and I'm assuming they qualify or would fall under that definition. But now we've got people on their one-wheels and their electric scooters and their electric bicycles, which are in a, in a sense, motorized as well. Would we, I'm, I think I'm asking a question we don't really know the answer to at this point. And I might be just be raising it so that we have a little thought going into that, because I certainly see a lot of people riding Hellbent for Leather on their electric bicycles on the beach these days. And sometimes they scare the snot out of me. Because they just kind of sneak up on you. You know, you can't hear them. And I imagine if we tried to restrict bicycles on the beach, we would have a groundswell of opposition. So just want to get that out there a little bit.
Just, just to expand on that a little bit, the only experience I've had with bikes is I have a friend who rides an e-bike. He was stopped by a ranger and told electric bikes are not allowed, only manual ones. He happens to have a disability, so once he presented that permit, or he put something on the bike, it was allowed. So I don't know what is the rule 100%, but that is an experience that I know someone had. They were told electric bikes were a no.
Okay.
So I would just say, for purposes of the meeting today, that's on Jerry's list. He'll explore it. We'll come back if we need to have further discussion about it, whether that's included or not. I think the spirit of the request initially and largely has to do with large vehicles, whether you can hear them or not. Hearing them wasn't really the issue. But I appreciate you bringing that up, Tom, because it just reminds us that even things that look simple on the surface always have details that need to be fleshed out, and we need to be very clear about the different versions of things that people get around on these days, in this case, on the beach. So Jerry, I think you can take that and make that party follow up.
So yeah, actually, I think I agree with your comment, Catherine, that I think the, the primary thrust is clearly, you know, larger vehicles, trucks and cars. And I think what this conversation tells me is that I'll probably ask for 15 minutes on the work session agenda in December, just to report back what I've learned at that point, so that at that point, council can weigh in with different thoughts before I start drafting the actual request for a rule change.
Okay. Is it possible, this is a question for Leila as well. I'm just thinking about the onus for public comment, of course, will be with the park service going through that process. But is there a way we could, is there a way we could create some space for a public comment on this, one way or the other, in our December or January council meetings? It'd be nice to, it'd be nice to let people know, hey, we're looking at this, and this is something people have brought up, but the city up till now hasn't pursued it. Now we are. What's the feeling about it? And can we get some input from you before the, before we go any further with the process? Is there a way we could do that in the confines of our, and I'm thinking council meeting, not so much workshop, just because it's viewed more and people can show up and it's designed for comment?
Absolutely. I think I'm just looking at the forecaster. There's, I think that's important, and we can set aside time for that in the December regular session meeting. And then we can also, that will help maybe inform what Jerry's doing, and then have that follow-up workshop discussion with that public feedback, I think, would actually really enrich the outcome at the end of the day. So, because I think a big part of it, too, is ensuring that folks show up to the hearing once it's once it's scheduled with the Oregon Parks Department, too. So I think that's a great idea. So I'll add it to the forecaster, and it doesn't look like we have a heavy meeting that month anyway. Sort of depends on a couple of things that are in motion. So I think that's a great suggestion.
And Jerry and I have the next coffee with councillors. So maybe you can promote this issue as something that we might like to talk about during that.
Yeah. As I say, I'm going to circulate the language from the rules specific to the natural resources criteria cluster, because I think that's the one area that I'm starting out a little shorthanded on. So if anybody on council or anybody adjacent to council can help out with that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, first, you have the snowy
And we, and we don't have to prove the case in the petition. We just have to lay out the case. We'll have plenty of time to develop evidence if that's what we want to do for a public hearing. But we have to be able to, you know, raise eyebrows with our initial filing. And so I just want to make sure we get, we get, we get it as full as, as complete as we can.
Ben should be able to give you some stuff about the snowy plovers.
Yeah, it's during off-season that you're allowed to drive on the beach, but it never hurts. And Jerry, I'll pull it out, but I think the findings for the moratorium
Right.
might have some good
Oh, that'd be great.
Information in there as well.
So questions about the timeline, Jerry? So we need to take action in January to be on the February agenda for parks. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. I think they meet every other month. Their meetings appear to be February, April, and June in the first half of 25.
And so whatever we do, we're probably not going to have any effect upon this season, because then the beach closes again in April until October.
That's correct.
Yeah. How often does parks meet relevant to this issue?
It's, it looks like every other month. So presumably, they do meet in December, but we don't have to get into their packet in time. We wouldn't be, or at least they didn't, the government relations folks didn't offer a December meeting as an option.
Well, I'm less concerned about rushing it up to get in the December meeting as I am. The distinct possibility that we file it, and they come back with us and say it would be better if, and they ask us to gussy it up a little bit. And just wondering, you know, how quickly could we be back in front of them if we weren't successful on our initial go-around?
That's a good question. And I would hope and assume that it would be the April meeting if we come up short in February. But I don't think we're going to come up short. I think if we come up short, that may be them telling us that they don't have an inclination to change the rules. I don't, you know, we should as the governing body, if we have the full support of the governing body, and we have a reasonably substantive request for rulemaking, we should at least open the door. That doesn't mean we win the case, but I think we'll open the door.
And back to Linda's question about how much territory that we're covering, I mean, it's us asking for closing the beach in other areas that aren't really adjacent to our own boundary. Is this something that the county would participate in?
I don't, I don't think so. And I also think that if that's a problem for the park, they can simply reduce the rule change to be effective along Manzanita's boundaries. I mean, I think the tricky part would be the north part of the beach, because obviously Manzanita's not a factor up close, up against the mountain, right? That's Neakani. So yes, you're right. At that point, it's possible that they would. And we can certainly ask the county to join our request. But I don't want to make this more complicated than it is. It's a pretty straightforward process.
Right.
And I think our, you know, the primary issue for us is whether or not, or can we effectively shut off the inflow of traffic at Treasure Cove, which is on our turf, so.
Well, the only other real access point that there, two access points are at the at the intersection, the three-way intersection, and then the access point up in Neakani, that's all soft sand. And then you better be ready to really four-wheel it to get down there.
Well, I can, I mean, I think this is a fine time to put somebody on notice at the county of what we're doing and see if they have any interest in joining us. But again, I I, part of this is, you know, you tee it up for Oregon Rex and Park and Rex. It's their rule. It's their process. We're just trying to trigger their action. If they've determined to take an action that gives us half a loaf and not a whole loaf, you know, we may not be able to control that. Or if they decide there are other parties that interest that they have to call in, they may well do that. But I'll, I'll work with Leila to figure out who at the county should be bused in, and we'll take it from there.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Good. And when we get to that point, it'd be pretty straightforward to ask residents from Neakani to testify. So
Sure.
That'd be an easy thing to do. And I think we my guess is, we'd have a great deal of support for that from that community. So good. Okay. Are there other questions or comments for Jerry on this? I will just say thank you for what you've done and what you're going to do on this. Appreciate you taking the point for it, Jerry. Thanks.
Right.
Okay, we're going to turn now to the third item. Well, not the third item. If you call the opening of the meeting an item, this is the third item then. The Recycling Modernization Act. So there he is. Dan Blue is joining us. So hopefully, we can both see you and hear you, and you can hear us, Dan.
Lee, good afternoon, Mayor Stock, members of the council. Nice to see you, Leila. Thank you for giving me some time on your agenda today. As the mayor previously said, this is just informational. I have a slide deck. Leila, do you want me to share it, or are you going to do it on your end?
By the way, sharing privileges, and that's easier.
Yeah, let me try it and see. I think, yeah, you need to give me privileges, it looks like.
I know. Can try that.
Looks like that's gonna work. Okay. Open this up. There we go.
That looks good.
Okay, great. And you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Again, thanks for letting me come before you under a different topic than the last time. I also want to thank Leila for making sure I understood that this was a Zoom-only meeting, because I was about to hop in my car a couple hours ago. So thank you, Leila, for doing that. My name is Dan Blue. I am the Government and Community Relations Manager for Recology Northern Oregon. And I support our operations at the coast, as well as in the valley and in the Portland metro area. I'm here this evening to talk a little bit about the Recycling Modernization Act, which I think we, we mentioned the last time I was in front of you. I'm going to provide a little bit of update on Recology Services very quickly. We'll jump into the RMA, talk a little bit about roles, responsibilities, opportunities, funding opportunities, and then answer any questions you have. It's, it's not a really long presentation meant to be very high level. So first, I'll start off pretty status quo for our operations in Manzanita. I haven't had very many changes. I do want to let you know we have a new route supervisor. His name is Steve Hyson. He's been a driver with the company and has been promoted to route supervisor. Katie Hardisty is still our operations manager for the coast. You can reach out to her for anything operational or otherwise. Also, I'm always available to you as a contact, and I'll share my contact information at the end of this presentation. Wanted to also let you know that our customer service team is, is fully staffed up, and we have recently hired we have recently hired two bilingual customer service reps who speak Spanish and English fluently. That's been a fantastic addition. And I'm, I'm really excited that we have made, to share that we have made significant progress in reducing our hold times. Right now, we're right around the two, two-minute time. And this week, we've been down as low as one minute average hold time. That's a really radical improvement from when I started close to two years ago. And that is because we have fully staffed. We've implemented some schedule changes for our customer service folks. And we're working on technology improvements and tracking. So this has really been a great thing for us. This was, this was kind of a, a problem area for our company. I'll be perfectly honest. And I'm really glad to say that those numbers continue to trend down in terms of hold times as customers try to reach out to us. I think, oh, I also wanted to mention that we've hired a new Assistant General Manager for Recology Western Oregon. And that person's name is Nick Olheiser. He is going to be able to help provide a little bit more quick turnaround in terms of decision-making and leadership for Recology Western Oregon operations. Nick's not on this call at all, but at some point we'll come to your council meeting and maybe at the beginning of a meeting, just introduce our new staff. I think that's it for the general overview for Recology unless there's any questions about what I just talked about.
Just congratulations on the staffing and then a request. I already see a lot of acronyms, so please make sure you spell those out as you go.
Absolutely will. Sorry about that. Absolutely will. Okay, so a little bit about how the Recycling Modernization, RMA came about. I don't know if you all recall, but quite a few years ago, China started to change their practices and accepting mixed recyclables from markets all over the world. That started with what's called the National Sword. That really tightened the Chinese markets and it kind of forced US recycling systems to take a look at how we're collecting recyclables and how we are sorting them and what materials we're sending overseas. And to be honest, I, you know, I think we were all neglectful and sending quite a bit of garbage to China and other overseas markets and letting them deal with it. So reci, National Sword was a big disruption for recycling markets. But I think it's leading actually to really good practices. In 2018, 2020, as a result of those changes in international markets, a steering committee was formed at the state level to really look at Oregon's recycling system. Looking, looking at the Opportunity to Recycle Act that started, I think in 1990-ish. And, you know, we have a mature, older recycling system in Oregon and it was kind of time to take a look at updating it. And out of that steering committee came Senate Bill 582, which is formed the basis for the Oregon Recycling Modernization Act. And over the last few years, including right now, the state has been working on getting ready to implement this new law, which will take effect July 1st of this coming year. So what is it? It's actually got a longer name than just Recycling Modernization Act. It's called the Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act. Basically updates our, our Oregon recycling system, building on existing programs and also leveraging new resources from packaging manufacturers that sell product into Oregon. The idea here is that it's going to create a system where everyone has exactly the same opportunities to recycle. Mainly in the form of ease of access to recycling statewide. The law requires producers of packaging, printing and writing paper, as well as food service ware to share responsibility. And by that, they kind of mean funding a lot of it. Share responsibility for the effective, responsible handling of their products once we as consumers have used them. Sorry, a lot of words. I promise I won't do this the whole time. So the law became effective January 1st and program implementation begins July 2025. Creates benefits and opportunities for local governments, including funding to expand recycling opportunities and help reduce contamination. There are some new requirements, especially for cities with a population of 4,000 or more. I think your population is around 650 or something. Is that, is that right? So you're well under that 4,000, you know, level. Although there are, there are a few requirements for all cities in Oregon, but you're already meeting them. So you don't have to worry about that, but we will talk about that. And then there are benefits and opportunities to expand recycling for, for populations, you know, smaller than 4,000, like I mentioned. Okay. Shifting gears a little bit. So what is a shared responsibility system look like? This includes really all the parts of the, the chain. You got your producers, the manufacturers of the products. You've got a PRO, which is called a Producer Responsibility Organization. I'll talk about them more in a minute. You've got service providers, which are garbage haulers like us and other haulers throughout the state. Local governments such as yours. And then you got recycling facilities and these are typically places where mixed recyclables go to be sorted into different commodities. And then you've got what are called under the RMA Recycling Responsible End Markets or REMs. REMs are the places where the recyclables go once they've all been sorted out. And this is a new feature, that responsible element to it is a new feature of the RMA. Where all recyclables must go to certified responsible end markets and the state has a role in certifying those markets. So this is kind of dealing with that. Not sending a bunch of garbage overseas to China to have them deal with it, right? So that's sort of a big picture of what this shared responsibility system looks like. So under the law, it establishes a producer responsibility organization or a PRO. So the, the state of Oregon was had a process where they were accepting applications from what they thought would be maybe a few different potential PROs to operate within the state. It turns out only one nonprofit organization called the Circular Action Alliance actually submitted an application to be an Oregon PRO. And so once they were accepted, they for, they therefore became the Oregon PRO because there was only one applicant, right? So the Circular Action Alliance is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It is comprised of a group of large corporations. You may recognize some of the names on the screen. So these are the product manufacturers. And they form this nonprofit in order to manage the implementation of the RMA on behalf of the Oregon DEQ in Oregon. And as you see, they're also the PRO for a couple of other states, Colorado and Maryland, and California is still in the works. So the Circular Action Alliance is a third party. And they are trying to kind of establish themselves as the go-to nonprofit for packaging, extended producer responsibility legislation across the country. So they have hired a local team. They have an executive director. They have staff. They have subcontractors who are all working right now to prepare for July 1, when the Recycling Modernization Act, you know, goes live, so to speak. I want to take a pause there, see if there's any questions on what I've talked about so far, unless you want me to plow through and save them for the end, Mayor.
Well, I think continuing, but just bear in mind, like, we'll have to come back, honestly, because it's still not super clear to me what this alliance actually does. So, yeah, and yeah, the, the simple diagram looked great, but now you're getting into what do they actually, what do they actually do? How do they work with companies in Oregon, you know, and, and I don't know how much relevance that's going to have that actually impacts Manzanita. So you'll have to help us do the presentation, understanding that.
Absolutely. We, we could go down a very deep rabbit hole, but like you said, some of it may not matter that much to Manzanita, but, but let's make sure I have time to answer all your questions for you. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep going then and we can come back to any of these slides.
Okay.
Okay. So now let me take a pause. So once again, the, the legislation went through the state. It is in law. The legislation created a third-party producer responsibility organization to implement on the ground many changes to Oregon's recycling system. The Circular Action Alliance is that third-party PRO or Producer Responsibility Organization that is responsible for collecting money from all of these companies, not just the ones you see on the screen, but anyone who wants to sell packaging product in the state of Oregon. The Circular Action Alliance is responsible for collecting funds from them. And then per the terms of the Recycling Modernization Act, distributing those funds across the state through local governments, often to service providers like us, but also to the material recovery facilities that sort the recyclables. So essentially this is going to be a big influx of money into the state of Oregon to help with, help pay for our current and expanded recycling system. That's, that's sort of the core. And the Circular Action Alliance is the the party that's responsible for doing all the on-the-ground work, connecting with local governments, connecting with us. And, and making this all happen over the coming years. Okay, then I'll move on. So one element of the Recycling Modernization Act is that it will fund expanded recycling services statewide. So their, their hope is communities that don't have access to recycling either at the curb or through recycling depots will have that access and they're going to provide funding for that. So for example, we currently provide garbage collection services in Clatsop County unincorporated areas, but we don't provide recycling services. The county is interested in having recycling curbside at all of their unincorporated, you know, customers, their residents. We will be able to apply to the Circular Action Alliance for funding to cover the cost of 4,000 recycling carts and distribute them across unincorporated Clatsop County. And that, so that's a cost that the, the residents won't bear the cost of those carts. So that's one example of how this works out to actually expand recycling services in the state of Oregon. And that will be replicated in counties across the state.
Would that be relevant for us here since a recycling facility is available through the county?
Not the curbside unless you were interested in adding curbside recycling. But there will be expansion of the depots and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
So this one kind of talks about what's included in the RMA and what's not. And I can add a few things, but the top left corner, those are all examples of packaging materials that the manufacturers of all the things you see in that square will have to pay into the Circular Action Alliance to help fund Oregon's recycling system. That's the simplest way that I could put it. The products on the right are exempted from the RMA. So they don't, they're not going to be paying into this new expanded recycling system. And also the bottle bill ones on the bottom, those are separately covered by existing legislation, which is the Oregon Bottle Bill. You know, when you buy a, a bottle of something, you know, you pay 10 cents per container. So that's a separate collection program.
So Ben, what's not covered or is that styrofoam and paint in the back or what?
No.
Tires?
No. I'm going to show you a list of exactly what's in the and also a special set of materials that are going to be new, something that you might consider at the, for the Manzanita transfer station. I'll, I'll get to that here in a minute.
Okay, great.
Okay. One of the things that the legislation does is it establishes a standard collection list for curbside recycling. It's called the Uniform Statewide Collection List. And it basically, like right now, all over Oregon, different cities, different jurisdictions have different lists of what they can recycle at the curb. So it's confusing if you move from one place to another or you, you know, live in one community and vacation in another community, for example, that list can be totally different. Under this new law, everywhere in the state will have the same uniform collection list for curbside recycling. There will also be improvements and mandatory improvements for again, cities or jurisdictions of 4,000 or more for improved recycling access at multifamily properties. And then they're also going to be investing in the material recovery facilities, the places that sort your recyclables once they end up, you know, at those facilities. And they're going to compensate them for contamination that comes into their facility. And also help them with capital upgrades for better sorting equipment. One of the problems with Oregon being an early adopter of recycling is that some of our sorting facilities are pretty out of date. Whereas facilities that are coming on, you know, just in the last 10 years are much more modern, have much better equipment. The idea here is that these funds can be used to bring those older facilities up to par with modern recycling systems.
Right.
There will also be an education and contamination reduction component. And so every jurisdiction then in the state is going to receive $3 per capita per year to be utilized for education and outreach and contamination reduction. So that's one thing that we will be wanting to talk with you all about is do you want to take those resources in yourself as a jurisdiction and spend it? Or do you want to designate it to us and we'll put it into education and outreach efforts in your community? I know Manzanita is a little different because we don't have curbside recycling. But maybe we can get creative about how that works unless you want to, you know, manage those resources yourself every year. We'll talk about that down, down in, in a few minutes. Okay. So this is the Uniform Statewide Collection List. This is what everybody in the state of Oregon will be able to put into their recycling carts at the curb, no matter where you live. Should look familiar for any of you who have experience with curbside recycling. And my son's going to walk in the door here, which means my dogs are going to bark here in a second. So I apologize. It won't last very long. Just got off the bus. So luckily I'm right to my house, which is great. Okay, so for us, nothing really changes from what we currently offer in other jurisdictions at the coast where we're currently doing curbside recycling. Not much changes. Now, there they go. There's going to be a separate list. It's called the PRO list. Again, PRO is Producer Responsibility Organization. These are harder to recycle materials that we won't be collecting in curbside carts. But the Circular Action Alliance has a responsibility to set up collection systems statewide for all of the materials that you see on your screen. So one way for them to do that is to expand existing recycling depots or build new depots where communities don't have access to them. And they're going to be doing both.
Hush.
And they're, they're currently talking to us about, for example, our Astoria Transfer Station. They're probably talking to the city of, or county of Tillamook about the Tillamook Transfer Station. I'm sure that they're going to be reaching out to Tillamook, who I think manages the, the, the Manzanita Transfer Station about adding these materials. So these are materials that your community will have ability to recycle for free in, in the near future.
So those are there already for our transfer station.
Most of those are?
Quite a few of them. We can take the polystyrene. We can take glass bottles and jars.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
How about the
Red paper.
Yeah, okay. So that's great, but that Manzanita is already doing this. Maybe you're not going to see that many changes as a result. Okay, so that's the other thing that Circular Action Alliance can do is negotiate with large box retailers, et cetera, to take some of these materials. But what I'm understanding is that their, their primary interest is adding these materials to existing or new recycling depots that will be set up across the state. Okay. These are some of the requirements that do apply for Manzanita. You already cover all of these, pretty much. Your materials that are, are collected at Manzanita Transfer Station already go to known and to be approved under the RMA material recyclers. So that's not a problem. You don't have co-mingled recycling at the curb. So the third one is not going to be an obligation for you. And if you were to buy recycling, if, if, for example, you said to us Recology, we really want to do curbside recycling, we would be obligated to acquire containers that have recycled content to them. And so those are all easy things for Manzanita to be in compliance with in terms of the law. Sorry. There we go. Is that not going forward? Okay. So these are the requirements for cities over 4,000. I don't need to spend a lot of time here. So let you take a look at those. I'm not going to go through them. They don't apply to you. And then these are a couple of options. When we talked about that $3 per capita, uh, education funding that'll come your way, you have the option to, to take that in-house, or you could designate us as your authorized service provider. And then we could take that funding directly from the Circular Action Alliance and work with you and the city staff on how best to utilize that, that funding in Manzanita, for example.
Question on that question. So given that we haven't had any input from the county on this, other than a presentation that was made to council quite a while ago, is there another option in there to take the per capita that Manzanita would get and fund it to the county to aid their efforts to modernize and improve the facility we already have in place here?
Yeah, that's certainly something, um, I can connect with Justin, the solid waste guy at, at Tillamook County about. And we can certainly have that conversation because they, you know, they, um, there must be some constraints on what that, that money is used for. I'm, I'm sure it's recycling education and contamination reduction. So for, for example, if there was a need for new signage at the recycling depot, maybe that's something that those funds could be used for. So I'm happy to connect with Justin or connect Leila to Justin, however you want to do that. Um, if that's something you'd like to explore.
Well, I would just say that's a, a suggest, it's a question for me really, looking at options. So let's not make it a suggestion from council yet. Let's, let's go to the end of the presentation because I think what's going to be key for us is just the balance between what the county is already providing, how they're going to deal with all of this.
Right.
And the fact that we're not probably going to have any change here unless we see fit to implement curbside recycling, in which case there's an impact on the county and they need to understand it. So we have to connect some dots, I think, before we and understand the impact before we'd make any decisions. How soon? Am I alone on that or are we in accord or? Okay, I guess that's accord sort of. Okay.
Sense to me.
I, I, I think curbside pickup is a really large conversation to have. I mean, yeah, that's a, that's a big decision point. And we've been without curbside for a good reason for a long time. So I think that was significant discussion.
And not everybody in the city participates in recycling. They don't use your, your service. They take everything to the, the transfer station themselves. So, okay. So.
Absolutely. Okay. So what's happening? Uh, so just wanted to let you know, part of this whole process, there was a pretty comprehensive survey that, uh, that the Circular Action Alliance coordinated. Manzanita did participate in that. Leila and I, uh, went over that. I filled out that survey, um, on your behalf. Um, Leila and I went over what that survey content was. We did submit it. That was just a necessary step that should you want to take advantage of any of these funding opportunities, we had to get that survey completed. Uh, it's called the ORSOP Oregon Recycling System Optimization Plan is the really succinct name they gave to it. Um, but that is done. So I just wanted to let you know that we did that on, on Manzanita's behalf. So opportunities for you, uh, you know, there is that, we talked about it, consider, uh, offering curbside recycling. Um, uh, Council President, you've said that's a, a longer conversation. Totally agree. Um, and then again, some of the funds could be used or we, there could be an addition of, of PRO materials at the, uh, Manzanita Transfer Station. And so tho- those are really the only two things. Um, in addition to the education and outreach funding that I thought about for, for the city of Manzanita in terms of opportunities here. Okay. This, sorry, this is a really busy screen. Um, don't worry about too much what's on the right. It's just a different way to look at what's required and what is optional. Um, and a- again, the orange boxes are the required for all. We kind of already talked about those items and sort of how they fit in the timeline of implementation. Um, the timeline on the left is really to just show you that we're in the, uh, you know, getting down to the nitty gritty in terms of, of, uh, working with the Circular Action Alliance. Um, designating service providers as a recipient of any funds. That's a decision that Manzanita is going to have to make here, uh, come, I think, December, January. And then, you know, if you were suddenly to say, we do want curbside recycling for everybody, um, we would need to, to present that project to the Circular Action Alliance for, um, essentially approval. And before anybody went, went out to buy carts, Circular Action Alliance would have to sort of green stamp it and say, yeah, that's a, that's an allowable, uh, you know, uh, project to implement with cir- with, uh, RMA funds. Um, without that pre-approval from them, we wouldn't get reimbursed for buying recycling roll carts, for example. That's, that's just a hypothetical. So I just wanted to share that rough timeframe with you. That's really all I had. Uh, questions? These are the four contacts folks for you. Um, I'm down there at the bottom. And I, I do, again, appreciate your time letting me, letting me come and present this to you. I'm happy to answer any questions or go back and look at previous slides. Just let me know.
Counselors, questions, comments?
Well, I, I do have a question. So, uh, does this app, uh, talk about distribution of the recycling? For instance, in the transfer station right now, it is completely filled with, uh, paper. And the last conversation I had with them, uh, in order to move the paper to recycling, we have to pay for it. So does, does this offer some, um, financial support for the recyclers to get the paper to market?
In a way, yes. So one of the things that the RMA funds for jurisdictions, for transfer stations, for, uh, recycling depots that are more than, I think the number is 50 miles from the material recovery facilities, which are primarily located in the Portland metro area. Uh, if they're more than 50 miles from the MRFs, the material recovery facilities, then there is a transportation offset. So what, what that means is whatever entity is picking up your recyclables in Tillamook and transporting a MRF, um, there will be some transportation cost offsets funded by the RMA. What I didn't mention is all of these investments into the different parts of Oregon's system really are intended to do two things. One of those things, well, intended to do a lot of things, but two things, um, that I think are worth noting. One is to stabilize recycling markets. And the idea there is that in the past, we have paid to have recyclables sorted. And then sometimes we get money back from the, the shipping and sorting and marketing of recyclables. And it's created a lot of volatility. And this is where it hits the curb. It's created volatility in, especially in programs that have curbside recycling in the rates that are charged. So what the RMA is intended to do at the end of the day, not in 2025, it's going to take a couple of years to really build this program out, is to stabilize the recycling market so that there's never a cost to ship recyclables to the, to the MRFs for sorting and marketing to end markets. So that will have a, a overall benefit to ratepayers across the state of Oregon. The second thing that I think is really critical is that because the manufacturers are paying for all of this, and it's going to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars a year, it's sending a signal to them to look at the design and recyclability and ease of recyclability of their pack- packaging products. So, uh, it's called eco-modulation and the intent is, is that this, this legislation doesn't just improve our collection system, but improves the recyclability and, uh, environmental attributes of the packaging that we consume.
Okay. So does that include plastics?
Yes.
And so we will, in the future, we will not have plastics that are not recyclable? That's a double negative, but.
I, I.
Is that a possibility? I, you probably can't answer that.
I don't know. I, I think we've, we've heard a lot from the plastics industry for 40 years about recyclability and
Right.
globally, 5% of plastics are recovered today.
Right, right.
Okay. I see two hands up, uh, Tom and Leila. I'll take Tom first unless Leila, you have something to input that might clarify. Okay. Before we go to Tom, you said we in that, Linda, and I think you were referring to the county. The city does not get involved with.
That, that's correct. I've just been.
That was a big picture, we, the county, we. Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, I've just been involved with that recycling for such a long time. I feel like I own it. So that's the we, but it is city. It's not the city.
No, that's good. And you'll bring to our discussions on this, years of, of working on this in the community. So yeah, I appreciate that. Tom, go ahead. You're muted, Tom.
Thank you. Dan, can we go back to your slide that was early in the presentation? You had like four different entity or five different entities that were represented, starting with the producers and ending with the MRFs. That one, yeah. Okay. So, um, as far as producers are concerned, you're talking about this legislation is, uh, designed to encourage producers in this term that you call eco-modulation to make, uh, products that are more readily, um, uh, recyclable. And is, I've got that right?
That, that's my understanding of the legislation. Yes. And what I've heard from you in the past.
Okay. But, but, you know, just thinking about costs to consumers. Um, it's likely to cause a cost increase because of the heightened responsibility for specialized types of products to package their materials in, right?
Well, I, I've, I've heard that question come up and I've asked it of DEQ myself, um, because I had that concern. Uh, this is not a, a per item fee, kind of like the deposit bill.
Yeah.
There's essentially the Circular Action Alliance saying we need this much money to be able to make the changes that the law requires. And then they're going out to not just the folks that I showed on the screen, but thousands of product manufacturers and essentially sending them a bill that if you want to put your product into Oregon, you gotta contribute. Oh, and by the way, the same thing for California, the same thing for Colorado, the same thing for Maryland. And the answer that DEQ had for me was you can go to 10 different stores today and pay 10 different prices for a six pack of Coca-Cola. And it's really, these are such global manufacturing entities and global corporations that the kind of money that they're sending in to fund the Circular Action Alliance and fund the RMA in Oregon is just, is just so minuscule that it won't have the same impact on pricing at the grocery store or at the shelf, um, that we would originally think. And that's, that's just me, uh, conveying to you what DEQ told me when I asked that exact same question. I think time will tell. But Coca-Cola, this is just a, you know, this is a hiccup for them.
And we, and you, you were just talking about other states that have already enacted this legislation. You don't have any information about prices going up at the register because of that?
I've never heard that.
Okay. So now.
I've not heard it.
Okay. Now, producer responsibility organization, that's, you're talking about CAA at this point?
Correct.
Okay. And then service providers would be you guys. Um, other than curbside recycling in Manzanita, does this change your business model in any way? And what I'm getting at is, uh, are we likely in Manzanita, even though things are not likely to change? Um, are we going to find that you're needing to charge consumers more as a result of some of the added responsibilities that you're taking on?
Yeah, I don't think so because two reasons. Um, I do believe that the investments, um, are going to stabilize some of the impacts to rate adjustments, but the bigger reason is that we allocate our costs by jurisdiction and, and your, your costs don't include curbside recycling. So any rate adjustments that other jurisdictions had seen previously, like back in 2017 or 18, when we went from receiving revenue from recycling to suddenly having to pay for recycling processing, those rate impacts didn't apply to you then and, and they wouldn't apply to you now.
Okay. Um, I'll figure out with Leila the thing about the money that we might get in local government. Um, because that one's eluding me at this point.
Um, are you talking about the, the $3 per capita?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a formula for education and contamination reduction only. That, that's what those sources are meant to be for. And, and your jurisdiction, I think, uh, even though you're under 4,000, still will get those funds. You will have to make a decision as a jurisdiction, whether you want to delegate it to you, to Tillamook County for education at the depot or to us for doing something creative about waste reduction, recycling, education within your city as your service provider.
But those would be designated funds that we can, we would have to spend on public education as opposed to adding it to the general fund and using it for whatever purpose we deem, uh, appropriate.
Absolutely. And, and for the jurisdictions that we do provide curbside recycling to, pretty much all of them have, have leaned towards, we're just going to designate it to you because we don't, we don't want the hassle of having to implement it ourselves.
I don't think it's a question of hassle. I think it's a question of experience and capability, um, to do that work. So just to.
Right.
That's a better way to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But because we do care about this, our, our community is deeply committed to many of these things. And the people are still, you know, distressed about the loss of a prior facility, you know, and I'm, we're not going to get into all of that. But I mean, it means a lot in the community. So we're going to take this seriously, but I'll, I'm going to, I'll come back to the county again in a minute, but let's take care of Leila and then Jerry to follow.
It's just a quick question, Dan. Um, with respect to curbside recycling, is that something that can be separated for? And I'm just asking for my own edification here, uh, commercial, like could it just be done for commercial, um, buildings here? And I only mentioned that because I, I have received some inquiries about like recycling, cardboard recycling for commercial.
Yeah, absolutely.
If there's a way to separate those two.
We provide that service up and down the coast. Um, so that's not a difficult add-on for us. We, we'd have to look at, you know, a rate change just to make sure we're covered all, in all of our costs there. Um, but we absolutely can provide that service.
Not recommending it. I'm just asking a question.
Okay. Thank you, Leila. Anything else? Okay. I'm going to ask you, we'll talk about county after we finish. So Jerry, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, uh, spurred by, uh, Tom's discussion about the per capita funding. So the, the options sound like we can use the per capita funding for education, uh, either from recology or from the county, um. You know, we do have a pretty highly regarded, uh, nonprofit partner in our community expertise in no waste, um, generally. Is there, is that a possibility? Can we use the funds to support Cardam's efforts?
I believe that's your choice. Yes. As long as the funds are used for education outreach, I think you could use Cardam or whoever, you know, Master Recyclers Program. I think there's a variety of places you could look to use that money.
Thanks.
Sure thing.
Do we have anything else? So Leila, I'm going to ask you the question and, and Linda may chime in as well because of her bad past experience. So what, what do you see, do you see a next step to commit, to commit, to connect with solid waste management for the county and, and what would that look like? Do you have any thoughts?
I probably think, yeah, I think that would make sense. I'm not entirely sure what who at the county would be the right person to talk to. I know you mentioned.
It'd be, it'd be, uh, it'd be Justin. I'm sorry.
Oh, because he took over Dave McCall's.
Exactly.
Role. Right. Okay. Right. Okay. Yeah. I think that would make sense to touch base with him.
I can, I can connect you by email and just introduce it, let him know. I, I, because I was at their SWAC meeting last night. Um, I mentioned that I was doing this presentation this evening. So I'm happy to connect the two of you by email.
Okay, great.
So I'm thinking here, um, so we'll learn more about what the county is up to. Uh, I'm, I'm just aware of, you know, the last year of conversation with the county on how strapped the county is for budget in just about every single operation they have. So that's what caused my mind to go there first. that's what caused my mind to go there first. They're a important provider in our community for recycling, as well as still some tra- actual trash taking, because some people still do that. So I would want to understand how or if we could, you know, what that option would look like, first of all. You know, there are other places, there are other places we could, uh, choose to invest that money. But in my mind, I'd, I'd love to hear if there's a different perspective on it from um, other counselors. In my mind, that would be the, the first place to look because that's the biggest impact really, in terms of how things get taken care of there and where they end up going. Um, anyway, so that's one thing. Then do we, do we feel a need to take up the question of, of recycle curbside services in the city? Do we, is that something we get to work on now and discuss? Or do we save that for later based on how that conversation has gone in the past? I, I frankly haven't been involved in that, so I don't have a sense of how important that would be to make, to make that offering potentially. So Lynda, do you have a perspective on that?
Well, uh, first of all, I strongly support, uh, the funding going to the county. I think they can better utilize that fund, uh, than, than we would in other situations. If, if we do, if, if it is the, um, request of the council that we have that discussion, I would rather have it after some informational presentations about what the difference is, why, uh, why many years ago we made the decision not to have recycling. And so just, so I, I would want it to be a, a bigger discussion than what we would have today.
Of course, yeah. Are there thoughts from other counselors on that question? None, okay. Uh, you know, I'm in the.
Yeah, I, I've just, I'm sorry, Catherine. Um, so Dan, I asked you the question about the business model. If we made the decision to shoot the money back to recology, does that create a little relief of debt pressure that we might experience, uh, less of a rate increase the next go around?
No, we would be obligated to expend those resources, so it doesn't really, um, we would expend those resources on education and contamination reduction. So it's not going to move the needle on any of our other, you know, uh, collection side costs. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, you know, we didn't have this on our priority project list, you know, in any way, shape or form for the next several months either. So I'm also trying to think about if we have the conversation even, where does it slot in and how does it compare to some of the other priorities we've set for the next several months? So that's food for thought for all of us, as well as for Leila in our agenda setting going forward.
And just, uh, one thing to clarify, if we even did consider curbside recycling, that's going to incur a fee to the homeowner higher than what we're paying now for trash removal.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So that's something certainly to consider. We've got basically a free service now at the transfer station.
Well, a service that's funded through our county tax dollars. It's not free. It's just not directly experienced by people.
Yeah.
Recycling anyway.
But if we went curbside, that tax fee would still be paid to the transfer station regardless if you use it or not. And an additional fee would come if you chose to participate in curbside.
That's the presumption, but we don't have a sense of what they intend to do. And that's what we need to understand so we can even have a decent conversation about what the options might look like and what might be best for people in the city.
And I should, I should add that we are offering a subscription recycling service, um, in other jurisdictions. And that's, that way, if a customer wanted it, they would pay extra for it, but it would be entirely voluntary on their part and it wouldn't affect anybody else's rates. So that's another thing to consider is a subscription recycling service in, in Manzanita. And I, I, I'd be clear, I'm not, I'm not advocating for any changes. I just want you to know what the benefits are and the opportunities related to the RMA and what we as a service provider can provide at your request.
Uh, Dan, I, that is an exceptional idea. I, I really appreciate your creative thinking about that. Um, to, to make an individual's decision is, is much easier than for the city to make the full decision. So I think I, I really appreciate that as an alternative.
So, and if I could, if I could just ask, in communities where you offered that, is that, uh, is the recycling picked up by the same truck or do you have more trucks on the street?
It, it's gonna depend on how many people take us up on it. The reason why I bring it up is that we have had requests from some of your neighbors to the south. Um, for curbside recycling services. And so we're in the process of looking at what that might cost on a subscription basis. Uh, for other jurisdictions, uh, for example, Clatsop County, it's not going to be a subscription. Everyone, it's going to be built into the rate uh, for everyone. And they don't have to use the recycling, but, but they're paying for it in a sense. And so that's a jurisdiction by jurisdiction decision. Uh, depending on how many customers we have, that will determine how many trucks are out there. I, I couldn't answer if we have the vehicles coming through right now that could pick that up without having to add a new route. Um, that's an operations question, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Uh, Dan, on the other jurisdictions where they've, uh, implemented the subscription user thing, um, what percentages of users are you getting to want to use it?
Don't have those numbers in front of me because we're just starting to offer it in some of those other jurisdictions, but, um, I, you know, I think uptake, uh, initially is probably going to be fairly modest. Um, it's not like 50 or 60% of the customers are going to suddenly call us and add, uh, that to their service. I know I just, because I just heard it last night, our sanitary is offering it, um, and they, I think are charging an extra $11 a month for recycling, uh, curbside. Just to give you a sense of what another hauler at the coast, not too far away, um, is, is currently offering. And so uh, I don't know what our numbers would look like, but that may be ballpark.
Because, you know, the other thing that I get concerned about when I think about some users deciding to go on the subscription was how close it was we were to losing that transfer station when it all went up for bid. Um, I mean, I, I thought that there was possibility that they were simply going to close it down and for a period of time, we either had to get rid of our stuff down in Tillamook or sneak in at Cannon Beach. Um, so.
Yes. So that's the reason we need to connect with the county. We've got to understand. And, and I think the county after the, also including the budget decisions they're making, because they're going to be, I think, going to be making cuts and we don't know what those are yet. So we need to get informed for that reason as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. So next steps will be, uh, for Leila to connect with, um, gentleman's name, please.
Justin.
Justin.
Thank you. Yeah. And then, you know, have the conversation with him. Let's see what's appropriate in terms of information back to council. We're not rushing to any decisions on this, especially as it might relate to any service changes here. It sounds like from the way he's spoken about it, Dan's company's got some things to learn about how to implement it and what it would cost anyway, since it's new. So it's good for us to understand that's an option for us potentially in the future, but probably not something we're going to pursue immediately. We have general consensus on that, along with follow-up?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, Dan, thank you for your time. I'm, I'm glad you were able to do this from home.
Yeah, me too. Thank you all. Uh, it's Justin Weiss of Tillamook County.
I still remember the last solid waste presentation that was given to council. It was the, the swan song for David McCall, his last presentation, right? About two hours on recycling and I thought, man, if I could remember all this, I would be a genius. That did not happen, so it's good to have the reminders today. So thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Okay. So for the rest of council, that's the end of the, uh, stated agenda. Is there anything else we need to touch base on or cover before we wrap the meeting up? Oh, is that a, just a go-forward sign or raising your hand?
I wanted to just quickly, if I could, Mayor, announce, um, or I forgot to it, city council, which feels foolish, but our tree lighting ceremony party.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Josh is wrapping up the poster. We'll have it out this week and get that out on all the social media stuffs. Um, but December 6th, Friday, uh, starts at four, gonna end 6, 6:30-ish, tree lighting, a little earlier this year. We learn something new every year. So expect that around 5:30 and the Neakonny Choir is going to be there again this year. So.
Good.
Hey, thank you, uh, to Mr. Simpson and his 12 students that will be performing and Santa, of course. And, um, I think Dan will be leading the procession from the fire department. So, uh, hope to see everybody there on the city hall site. Uh, and, um, we'll, again, get the word out there and get the posters out, but I appreciate the opportunity to, to get it out into the world. So thanks.
That was four to 6:30 on December 6th. What time did you say the lighting was going to be? Five?
5:30 is what we're aiming for. I think sunset's around five o'clock, gets dark, so.
As long as the kids don't find the switch ahead of time, like they did last year.
Yeah. We talked about maybe, yeah, we, we, uh.
That's all right. Part of, part of the excitement. Okay, thanks, everyone. Uh, thanks for the, thanks for the involvement and the good questions today. It was in instructive, like these sessions are meant to be. So I appreciate everybody's participation. And with, even without a gavel, I will call this meeting to a close at 3:21. Thank you, everyone, and have a very nice evening. Thanks for the members.